I see the name.
Okay, all right, we'll start, we're starting about thirty seconds.
Yeah, I don't, oh, and Doreen, that's cool.
Yeah, I see Doreen. Commissioner Dick, I don't see anybody else, but I can hear Commissioner Roberts.
So I just want to clarify, is it okay if we have guests observe this meeting?
Yeah, it's an open, it's an open, uh, public meeting, so yeah.
That's what I was thinking, sounds good.
All right, so it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. This is a Tiger Planning Commission Public Meeting. Today is October fourth, twenty twenty-one. Doreen, may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. President Hu?
Here.
Vice President Jackson?
President.
Commissioner Brooke?
Here.
Alternate Commissioner Dick? President? Thank you. Uh, alternate Commissioner Miranda?
President.
Commissioner Quinones? Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Commissioner Shook?
I am here.
Thank you. Commissioner K. Seven?
I'm here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
And Commissioner Whitehurst? Mr. Whitehurst? Okay.
Okay, thank you, Doreen. Commissioners, in communication since our last meeting, uh, August second. Commissioner Watson, please go ahead.
Um, on September fourteenth, there was a transportation, um, system plan update, um, meeting, that the CAC meeting that I attended, and on, um, September twenty-ninth, um, there was a presentation, uh, uh, Washington Square SWG, um, meeting that I attended as well. Um, and since I think that's the topic for this meeting today, um, I won't repeat anything that, um, I don't want to ruin the surprise.
Okay, all right, so anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Watson. Um, so let's go on, move on to consideration of minutes. So hopefully, everybody had a chance to review the draft minute from August second that's being circulated by Dorings. Um, does anybody have any additions, deletions, or corrections? You want to bring to our attention other than, uh, typo, minor typos? All right, I see none, so I declared the minutes from August second approved as submitted. All right, so let's go on to our main, um, main course of the event, the tonight's meeting, it's a briefing on Washington Square update, and it will be presented by Senior Planner Susan Schenks. Good, good evening, Susan.
Good evening, President Hu, um, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, just wanted to double check that. Um, so I'm actually here this evening, not by myself. Usually, I've done these briefings, uh, just by myself, but this evening you have a special treat, um, that, uh, we have a number of other people with us who have been part of like the larger team that has worked with me on the Washington Square Regional Center Update Project, and, um, so anyway, so that's, uh, Kealan, you were asking if it was okay if guests observed, they're actually, um, more participants than guests, um, and when I start sharing my presentation, I will introduce those peoples, uh, those people more formally, but we do have a number of staff members as well as a member of our consultant team. Um, so if it's okay with you, I'm gonna dive in and share our presentation, and, um, and I will ask that, uh, because I really just want to get through the presentation as quickly as possible, so we have a lot of time left over to have a, a conversation, um, about things, just to please hold your questions and comments for the end, uh, because the main point of this is to bring you up to speed with where the project is and what the draft recommendations are that we've developed over the course of now about a year and a half, um, but we really want to hear your feedback. Um, so we want to get through the presentation and let you have time to, uh, to ask us questions and to give us your feedback. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen. Can everybody see my screen, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, I don't know if you're keeping count, but I was surprised to learn when I went back and did the count that this is the sixth briefing briefing that you've had on this project since it's began, um, about a year, a little over a year and a half ago, um, this is a long-range planning project, so this is kind of par for the course for these kinds of projects. Uh, it is the last briefing that you'll have on the project before I come back in November, um, in a legislative public hearing, uh, process and bring you, um, something to review and make a recommendation on to city council for adoption, and they would be having their public hearing in December. So, um, between now and then, uh, between now, when I come back, uh, to you in November, I welcome your feedback. It doesn't have to be just at this briefing this evening. Um, so like I was saying, that the focus of this briefing is to, to, uh, go over the various draft recommendations that we've developed for the project, um, that is the focus tonight. There is some other information in here, uh, but mostly it's kind of review, uh, we really do want to focus on the recommendations. Um, and we also, like I said, I wanted to introduce the rest of, uh, my teammates who are here with me, who've been working with me on the project in various ways, um, over the past many, many months, and so, um, we have Dave Roth, um, I think you've, uh, seen him before, he is our senior transportation planner, and he is in the middle of doing a transportation system plan update, and he and I have been coordinating very closely because there are some transportation recommendations that are going to come out of the Washington Square Project. Uh, Lloyd Purdy is also on this call, and he is our Economic Development Manager. I think you've also seen him more recently, uh, along with Hope Pollard. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it this evening, but they've been working, um, quite diligently on the Tigard Made project, which is, um, something that we'll probably be bringing before you, uh, for you in adoption, um, next year. Uh, we also have Skylar Warren, he's a senior, uh, planner, uh, with the City of Tigard, and, um, you probably know him from River Terrace two dot O, but he is also our kind of in-house housing expert. Um, and last but certainly not least, we also have Becky Hewitt, and she is the project manager for the consultant team. Uh, she is with Eco Northwest, they're the prime consultant on the project, uh, there are also many other sub consultants, but she's been leading the whole project team. And, uh, how this evening is gonna work is that I'm going to go through the presentation, uh, but I'm gonna be handing off, um, explanation about the residential displacement risk, um, information to Becky to review with you, because she is very much a subject matter expert on that topic. Um, and she might chime in every once in a while as we go through to make sure that I don't miss anything, but for the most part, you're gonna be hearing from me, and like I said, just want to get through the presentation so that then we have a, can have a larger conversation, um, with any more detailed comments or questions you might have, and bring in the rest of the team if you have questions for them. Okay, so, um, with that, I think those introductions are done. Oh, one other thing about this slide, you might have noticed between also this slide as well as this one, certain things are translated into Spanish on all of the slides, kind of the main, uh, topics and headers. Um, and this is not just me trying to be politically correct, you know, because we are trying to be more inclusive and equitable in everything that we do in the city. Um, this actually has a purpose, um, it's not necessarily maybe needed for this meeting, but this slide deck was originally built off a fully bilingual slide deck that we used when, uh, just last week, uh, when we presented to the Stakeholder Working Group, a community member, like subgroup, um, and two of the members of that group are Spanish language speakers, and so, um, we've been actually creating bilingual, uh, PowerPoints, uh, so that they can more easily participate and follow along. And, um, honestly, like, uh, we need to do better in terms of really including our Spanish speaking and other language speakers, um, in the community because there are many of them, and so, we're gonna try to do better, so this is my, my nod to that, and, um, you actually might be hearing from some Spanish speakers at the, um, legislative hearing itself. I, I hope to bring those voices forward with us and not just have you hear from me about what those, what those folks have been, uh, telling us over the course of this project. Okay, so, um, just as a reminder, uh, as to like kind of the full project scope and kind of, um, objective, is that our main goals here, I mean, they're kind of multifold, but they're, but they're all kind of layered within each other. Uh, we definitely wanted to work with the community and our project partners. Uh, we're refining the original vision, but our goal is to create more housing, transportation, and business opportunities in this area for our community. Uh, we also want to advance our commitment to be more walkable, healthy, and inclusive, so as you'll see, we hope that these recommendations really do show a commitment to, um, advancing our goals, um, for walkability, health, and inclusivity in our community. And last but not least, and this really came out during the project, uh, reviewing the, um, the old goals and policies and vision for this area, but also just looking forward and doing the market analysis, well, the various types of analyses, and hearing from the community is that we also need to balance, um, you know, our community's aspirations with the market realities that are out there, and with the city's ability to deliver new projects and programs. Um, we really feel that's important, we want to uh, really create recommendations that, um, are achievable, um, and so that the community can really see kind of the fruits of their efforts, um, that they've put into this project. And the meeting objectives for tonight is that, uh, to review the draft recommendations, to summarize next steps, and then to get feedback from you all. Um, so this is the kind of the recommendations as we've organized them. So we have kind of five topical sets of re- of recommendations. They're actually organized around the themes that we heard from the community to basically kind of bridge that gap, so that it helped us not to speak, you know, in our planneries, you know, technical language by really, um, you know, organizing these recommendations around what the community was telling us that they wanted to see here. Um, so they were, they, not only are they organize, organized around the themes that we heard from the community, but they actually really were developed, um, based on what we heard, but also what we learned from the technical analysis. Um, and lastly, um, they will form the basis, these recommendations, and based on these kind of five topic areas, they will form the basis for the goals and policies that we are going to be putting into our new comprehensive plan chapter on the regional center, and that's the document that you'll be seeing in November, is a new comprehensive plan chapter. Uh, so the recommendations you're, you're seeing tonight, um, you know, and that we want your feedback on will really uh, feed directly into these new goals and policies that we're developing for the comprehensive plan chapter on the regional center. Um, a lot of the slides you're gonna see tonight are actually the graphics that we developed, um, to share with the community, and that we shared with you in your meeting packet. So there was a number of graphics, I hope you had a chance to look at them, you know, based on these themes, land use and housing, business development, transportation, and parks, um, and so I hope you had a chance to look at those, and if not, I really encourage you to go, maybe go back, um, after this meeting at some point, and look at them in more detail, because there's a lot of information on them, even though they are very graphic oriented. Um, I'm not gonna be able to go into every single detail on those draft recommendation graphics. Um, you'll be seeing them tonight, it's what was in your packet, so I hope you've had a chance to review them, and I'm just gonna, you know, kind of hit some high points, um, but certainly I welcome feedback on anything, uh, that we put in your packet as well as, um, what you'll be seeing tonight. Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna pause there, and even though I said hold questions, I just want to make sure that you still can hear me okay, you can see, see the slide deck okay, um, and everything's coming together, and you know why we're all here tonight.
So far, so good.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, um, the first graphic, um, instead of recommendations that I want to review with you is our land use recommendations. These are not necessarily the exact land uses or the, even the exact zones that we will be eventually proposing out of this, out of this project, but it gives you a sense, and we wanted to kind of, uh, describe this area, um, in a way that people could really understand. And so what I'd like you to focus on, on this graphic, because again, I'm not gonna go into every single detail here, is the pink area in the middle. Uh, yes, it's where the Washington Square Mall is located, but it's also bigger than that, it's on the other side of Greenberg Road as well, um, as well as up, you know, by Hall Boulevard, uh, so it is the mall, but it's also more than the mall. This is kind of, um, our primary redevelopment area. We know that the mall is redeveloping already, we know that they have future plans, hopes, you know, aspirations to redevelop anymore, uh, to redevelop even more. Um, and unlike the, our current zoning and our, our, our last vision for this area from twenty years ago, the pink area is really kind of the most, uh, intense area of development, uh, in this regional plan area, uh, that, that we're proposing. Um, and, and then out from that area, it's almost like that there's, um, you know, different levels of intensity as you move further away from that pink area on either side. So if you imagine kind of that middle pink area, that's where you're gonna have the tallest buildings and the broadest mix of uses, um, stores and services as well as housing. Um, we're bringing down the height in this area from the current height of about twenty stories, and we're bringing that down to something a little bit more achievable, or more achievable, not a little bit, more achievable, uh, to four to twelve stories with allowances for less, um, you know, with some special approvals. So that's kind of our highest density area, and then if you kind of move out from that area on either side to the blue area, which, you know, is more gonna be our mixed-use employment area on the left-hand side, you know, this will have up to seven-story tall buildings, but then, you know, going down to about two-story buildings. And this will be a mix of commercial and light industrial uses with options for housing on the upper stories. Um, we don't necessarily expect it there, but we're going to allow it if somebody wants to go in that direction. And on the other side of the pink area are the various gradations of yellow and gold and orange, and this is more of a residential area, but again, of different scales. Uh, so you've got, uh, a small residential area, um, starting at the top in the, the, the kind of the palest yellow area that is kind of more what people would consider low-density housing. You might see single detached homes in this area, but all, also row houses or cottage clusters. Um, and that's surrounded by kind of a more medium-density residential area, kind of similar heights, one to three stories, um, but with an allowance for commercial on the ground floor, um, if they wanted to go higher than that. Um, again, we don't expect to see a lot of that, but it might bring in some neighborhood-serving commercial and small little pockets here and there, and we want to allow for that. Um, and lastly is this one kind of more dense, uh, more mixed-use residential area, uh, which is the darkest orange around Oak Street, kind of to the south. And, uh, that's kind of been more in the range of four to seven stories, kind of what we're seeing now with the new apartment development, so we kind of shrunk that kind of high-intensity residential area a bit, again, based on not only what we heard from the community, but what we, um, learned from the market analysis. And last but not least, I just want to focus your attention on the little purple strip, um, on the very right-hand side along Hall Boulevard. Um, this area is currently actually zoned for mixed-use residential. Um, but if you read between the lines and you look at the old history and you hear from the community, uh, it really serves, I mean, there is existing commercial development there that really is neighborhood-serving, and, you know, really what we heard from the community is like, keep that scale. Um, we don't think this area is gonna go away, we don't think it's just gonna be redeveloped with, um, residential buildings, even mixed-use residential buildings, uh, based on market analysis. So we really want, we've chosen to like really acknowledge and then support it by changing, um, the land use designation in this area and really recognizing it as a kind of neighborhood-serving Main Street. And with scales of, you know, one to two stories, but with the allowance to go higher, again, if there's housing on top. So that's kind of the overarching land use recommendations that we've prepared, um, based on everything we've heard and learned. And now I'm gonna go through the other, uh, topic areas. So housing, um, and with these topics, I'm gonna first describe what we heard from the community at a really kind of synthesized level, and that what we learned from the analysis, um, which is a lot of what you've already heard from me, uh, over the, the last several briefings, uh, so not gonna spend too much time with that, and then lastly focusing on the recommendations. So housing, you know, people really would need to see, they'd want any more affordable housing options, specifically more large household housing options for larger families, and a broader range of housing types, not just apartments. Um, and this is that one slide I said before, then get a handoff to Becky. Um, this is probably the one place that we're gonna take a little bit of a deeper dive away from the recommendations, uh, because it's both really important and because the displacement risk analysis that Echo Northwest did is not something you've heard about before, and it's, um, it's, it's very complex analysis, uh, we've very much synthesized it here. These are the key takeaways from that analysis, but I really want to invite Becky Hewitt, um, to explain a little bit more about what it, what displacement risk analysis even means and what, uh, this slide is telling us. So Becky, can I pass it off to you?
Sure, thanks, Susan. Um, so I won't go into too much of the methodology, although I'm happy to field questions if folks have them. Um, but we are focused on renters when we're thinking about displacement risk because they have, um, a lot less, um, say over their, um, cost of housing and, uh, whether they get to stay or go. So, um, what we looked at is, um, how, um, rental housing is distributed within this area. Um, renters throughout the region and just in general face a lot more vulnerability to displacement, particularly lower income and cost burden renters. So we're starting from a place of relatively high vulnerability, just to look at a renter population in this area. Um, and particularly renters that are living in, um, housing that's not subsidized and not regulated, and maybe older housing, so it's kind of, um, just subject to market forces and, um, could be, you know, changes could happen to it basically at the discretion of the property owner. Um, so we identified a couple of areas that have a higher concentration of apartments, so along Hall Boulevard, there's apartments, you know, along much of the length of Hall Boulevard in this area. Um, but the apartment buildings that are closest to the mall are the ones that are most likely to have kind of relatively nearer to midterm influence from the mall's redevelopment. So as the mall redevelops, uh, whether the city specifically tries to support that or not, um, that kind of investment in that place and making that area a little bit, you know, nicer and more pedestrian-friendly, um, can in some cases cause property owners to put some more money into their property and then try to raise the rents, um, which can increase the risk of displacement for the existing renters. So that's the, one of the two darker areas, it's up along Hall and Greenberg. The other area, um, down along Oak and the southern end of Hall is, uh, an area that has a couple of single-family homes, kind of a couple clusters of single-family homes. Um, that are probably rental homes, not all of them are rentals, but some of them are. And some of those are already zoned, um, to allow for redevelopment, some of them are in the process of redevelopment now. Um, and so those are, those are houses where existing renters could be displaced as redevelopment occurs. Generally, that redevelopment would bring a fair amount of new housing supply into Tigard, which is good on the whole for, um, for preventing displacement, but it could cause individual, um, households to be displaced in that area, and then more broadly within this area over a longer period of time. Um, you could see increasing market pressure, um, if the, you know, if, if the plan is effective and if, um, the area does become, um, even more desirable for people to live in, um, you could see upward pressure on rents that could increase displacement risks. Susan, anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I think that's great, um, and, um, thank you for that, and just, uh, you'll see in the next slide, kind of a very similar shapes as well as some new shapes related to displacement risk, that I will try to tie in together with our recommendations, but thank you very much, Becky. So because of what we heard, and then because of the analysis that we did, both the market analysis as well as the displacement risk analysis that Becky just described, um, our housing recommendations are summarized on this slide. Um, first and foremost, just to focus on the left-hand side, um, and the map itself. Um, the main recommendation here, which is not so different from what's currently allowed, uh, but it kind of shows it more, uh, spatially on the map, is where, um, you know, basically that it's showing that housing, we're gonna be allowing housing everywhere, which is pretty much what's allowed now. Uh, but more specifically, it's the hatched area, again, in the middle, um, around Washington Square Mall, but also across the road, across Greenberg, um, over here, also hatched area, where housing would both be allowed by itself as well as in a mixed-use commercial building, so on the upper floors above businesses, so that there's a lot of opportunity for different housing types, um, as a result. Um, and in the purple areas, which is primarily this large area on the other side of two seventeen and along Hall Boulevard, that little bit, housing would not be allowed by itself because these areas, um, we want to reserve for, you know, jobs and businesses, um, to make sure that they have land for those kinds of uses, um, and needs of the community, um, that, that housing would be allowed here, but only on the upper floors, so above, um, the businesses, um, that would be allowed. Um, and lastly, there's just this one little area over in the corner, kind of the, I don't know, beige-y cantaloupey area, cantaloupe-colored area, uh, where housing would just be allowed by itself, so it wouldn't be allowed in combination with any kind of commercial uses. So, but hopefully this helps you understand kind of how and where housing would be allowed. Um, and then a lot of these other recommendations, um, about supporting the development of different housing types, supporting rental housing stability, and supporting the development of more affordable housing, many of these recommendations, I would say about half, um, are new things that we have not yet done, but that are definitely in our affordable housing plan. And so it's, it's calling out, um, the need for implementing, uh, those aspects of the affordable housing plan specifically to help this area to remain, you know, to, you know, to stabilize the renters in this area, um, or to support the development of more affordable housing, um, or to support the development of a range of housing types by, for example, creating a a revolving loan fund for middle housing development. Um, so there's definitely some new ideas here that, but, that, that are in the affordable housing plan that just, um, have yet to be fully implemented citywide, much less here that we're focusing on. But there are some things that we're already doing that we're calling out here, like, we already do exempt affordable housing projects from certain city fees that can be, um, very significant for, um, for an affordable housing project and its ability to, you know, do the project. But we're doing some other things, uh, kind of through what would be more a regulatory mechanism, uh, for example, providing height bonuses if there's an affordable housing per project being proposed. And certainly, um, a big thing we'll be doing with a whole set of code amendments is removing the regulatory barrier, barriers to medium and high-density housing development. Uh, this is something that, uh, Echo Northwest, um, helped us to identify in a code audit that they did, uh, to show us where we were actually preventing certain housing types from being built here. Um, definitely a lot of middle housing types were being prevented because of certain standards we have in our code, and so we, we're gonna go in and, and, uh, you know, refine our code so that we can, uh, get rid of those barriers and hopefully get all the different ranges of houses that we want to see and that the community, um, really needs. The one thing I want to just, uh, focus on really briefly, it kind of, uh, dovetails with what Becky was saying about displacement risk. This shape up here, the outline of the shape up here, this is the same shape that was on the previous slide. This is where there is, um, a higher risk for renters, uh, to experience displacement because of their proximity to the Washington Square Mall, and so as it redevelops, it just, there'll be more market pressure on these particular properties and, and you have about, you know, you know, several hundred renters kind of in this area. Um, and so with regard to our housing recommendation, based on what we learned from that analysis, we're saying, you know, in terms of helping to, uh, stabilize renters in this area is that this one area should be our near-term anti-displacement priority area. And then in terms of the, the longer-term priority area for, um, uh, you know, anti-displacement policies and, and And then in terms of the, the longer-term priority area for um, uh, you know, anti-displacement policies and, and uh, programs, it's this other area, sorry, my cursor keeps going in and out on me. Um, pretty much along Hall Boulevard, there are many um, unregulated um, older um, housing, like multifamily housing developments all along Hall Boulevard um, that house hundreds of um, of people. And um, that they are, you know, not as at great, at as great a risk as these folks over here that are closer to the mall. Um, but there still is risk here for displacement, for these properties to redevelop or for them to um, kind of put some money into the property and then um, raise the rents as a result. Um, and so this would be our secondary, uh, like longer-term, longer-term anti-displacement priority area um, that kind of fits in under our support rental housing stability um, recommendation. So those are our housing recommendations. Moving on to business development, um, normally we'd probably call this economic development, but we uh, feel that people often don't understand what that means. It's why we have Lloyd Purdy on the job, he's our economic development manager. Um, however, people, it's, it's just a, a concept that uh, kind of sometimes can be confusing and so you might not have, this term is probably not the most accurate, but it's, it's, we were trying to uh, have this uh, make sense to um, just pretty much anybody. So what we heard from the community around businesses, um, around the commercial activity in this area is they, they wanted to see more business diversity and commercial vitality. Uh, specifically, uh, they wanted to see more multicultural shopping and dining options that really reflect, you know, the area. Um, they wanted to see the scale of neighborhood businesses on Hall Boulevard pretty much remain the same. Uh, they would love to see the mall parking lots get redeveloped, you know, um, to support hopefully some of those multicultural shopping and dining options. Um, and certainly, uh, they were aware of all the vacant buildings out there even before COVID and were wanting to see those vacant buildings filled. And then um, this is kind of a summary of all the uh, all that we learned from our various analyses, um, having to do with um, development feasibility and market analysis. I've talked with um, the planning commission before and other briefings about the conclusions we've come to for the different areas that are shown by the different colors on this map. Um, I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide because we've kind of uh, gone over it before, but what this slide shows you essentially is that, you know, there's opportunity for certain kinds of things in certain areas. Um, and then, you know, kind of showing what the market will likely support in these areas. So, you know, this is where we learned that we're not going to see 20-story buildings anywhere in this area. Um, so we're going to see, you know, you know, shorter buildings and perhaps even much shorter buildings. Um, and sometimes we're going to see new buildings, but sometimes we're going to see adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Um, and there is definitely a strong um, you know, demand for more housing, uh, you know, market demand for more housing. So um, there's, there's hope there that we will continue to get more housing of different types in this area. Um, but I'm just going to call out the one gray box down in the left-hand corner because the challenges um, that, that exist for development in this area um, are mostly regulatory. I mean, there's a lot of regulatory things that we can do differently to um, to remove some of the challenges that development is currently experiencing in this area. Um, it's not all regulatory, um, there definitely are just market barriers. Um, you know, we're still kind of in a suburban market and um, so, and there's other more competitive areas for certain kinds of uses or buildings. Um, but to be competitive, um, it would definitely uh, be helpful if we got rid of our regulatory barriers. So that's what we learned. Um, and then moving on to what we're recommending. Uh, you know, because we don't have a lot of control, once we've, you know, zoned a property or an area a certain way and, and described the different kinds of businesses and uses that can happen in that area. You know, we don't necessarily have a lot of control over what businesses actually really choose to um, to locate in that area. Um, so a lot of our recommendations, um, the ones over here under support mall redevelopment in this pink area, uh, foster economic growth by removing regulatory barriers and incentivizing ground floor commu- commercial uses. All of these are regulatory changes that we're recommending, so that's completely within our control. Um, and something that, you know, we can do that we think would help this area um, to kind of uh, have some positive change. Uh, there are, however, some things that are more in the realm of economic development programming and assistance, so not so much regulatory, but um, more along the lines of what Lloyd Purdy does um, with his team. And so we have those kinds of recommendations as well. Um, so over here, we have support Hall Boulevard businesses. Now, this first bullet is about um, a regulatory change. Um, so basically, it's a recommendation to change the zoning to support the existing neighborhood scale commercial area, which is really not what we have right now. Um, but these other two bullets are about approaching those um, those business and property owners and exploring the feasibility of, you know, or interest in um, a community commercial investment pilot project, um, as well as exploring uh, their possible interest in an Oregon Main Street designation that would potentially, you know, get them some resources, um, some facade improvement funds, for example. So uh, that's, you know, something that we can do, um, but it really also takes interest and participation by the business owners and the property owners. Um, and, and for the community commercial investment pilot project, that even takes interest uh, by the community in, in doing something like that. Um, but we think that that would be really appropriate for this area to try um, and to see what really resonates with um, the business and property owners um, in that area. And then more generally speaking, um, because of our desire and because of what we heard from the community about um, more multicultural um, businesses and um, you know, dining options, um, service options, we're, you know, going to do our best to facilitate more business diversity. Um, there's already a number of things that we are doing right now, um, like partnering with nonprofit and multicultural businesses uh, or business partners to support women and minority-owned businesses. But there's some other things that uh, again, Lloyd Purdy and his team really wants to explore and in terms of being better able to support more business diversity here as well as elsewhere in the city. So moving on to transportation, uh, what we heard here is address traffic issues, that's always uh, an issue that comes up, of course. But we also heard loud and clear that people want to see better walking and biking facilities in this area. There are definitely some major deficiencies, there's lack of sidewalks, there's lack of bike lanes on major streets. Um, there's a lack of crossings on major streets, um, also a lack of lighting, especially on Greenberg Road along the cemetery frontage. Um, and people really would like to see a safe and easy way to get across Highway 217. Um, this is um, a map of transportation opportunities and challenges. So again, this is what we learned, um, both from an on-the-ground audit as well as from uh, just our general knowledge. Um, learned a lot from Dave about what's going on in this area as well. Um, and I'm not going to go into this in great detail because I think we've talked about it before. Uh, certainly, we all know that Hall Boulevard and Greenberg Road, as well as Highway 217, the railroad tracks and Fano Creek, while they all provide um, you know, various like ways to get through the area or lovely trails. Um, obviously, the railroad track has its own special purpose, but they actually all serve as barriers. So we really lack connectivity, especially for uh, pedestrians and bicyclists in this area, so it's a major theme. And what this map shows is that all the things that are highlighted kind of in red are the challenges. You know, mostly there are a lot of barriers um, for people to get around um, on foot or on bike or by bus or even by car. And then uh, the green things are opportunities, um, either things that are uh, happening or things that we should uh, definitely take advantage of. And because of all that, we have developed a series of transportation recommendations, and this is where the project team has worked very closely with uh, Dave Roth and his uh, team who are working on updating our transportation system plan. And over on the right-hand side are the five priority projects that we've identified based on what we heard from the community, um, as well as what we also know about the, the TSP work that Dave and his team have been doing. Um, and number one on the list is to really focus on Greenberg Road, both along its length, um, to help it become more of a seam rather than a barrier between uh, the two areas that are kind of the primary areas. Um, you know, in the regional center, you know, Greenberg Road just kind of goes right be- down between them, there are very few crossings. Um, this is a, you know, a high-vehicle road, it's a high, higher-speed road. Um, there's a lot of transit that uses this road and right now, it's just, it's a barrier for pedestrian and cyclists. Um, and there are definitely businesses and services on both sides, as well as a lot of residential um, areas on this side. Um, and obviously, the barrier of Highway 217 um, is huge. Um, and so that's what number three is talking about, is looking at ways to overcome that barrier. And the number one thing that came out of our survey that we did with the community is their preferences to have um, a standalone ped bike bridge um, over Highway 217, kind of around 95th Avenue. And that there are some other, you know, routes that could be um, investigated to get folks over Highway 217 um, and also across Greenberg Road and over to Fano Creek Trail, as well as to the Tigard Heritage Trail. Um, so kind of Greenberg Road and getting across Highway 217 are, you know, kind of the three main priorities in this area. And then the fourth and fifth have to do with, um, the fourth has to do with Hall Boulevard, uh, getting across Hall Boulevard and accessing Metzger Park, which is right over here, but really difficult to access uh, for those folks that are over here. Um, and also completing the pedestrian and bicycle facilities on Oak Street, um, because that is a major east-west corridor through this area. Uh, there's also, as you can see, many other priority or many other projects, uh, but I just wanted to go over the five priority projects. Um, and uh, but happy to take um, comments on all the other projects as well. Many of these are actually going to be wrapped into Dave's um, transportation system plan update. Um, so you'll have an opportunity to see them reflected there as well and to comment on them as well. And lastly, parks and green space, we definitely heard that there's a huge need in this area for parks and green space. That it's just, there's a lot of asphalt, uh, there's already a lot of development, there's very little vacant land, very little open space. Or if it is open space, it's privately held, it's not public, uh, like the wetland area that I'll show you. Um, people wanted to, um, they really were disappointed when we talked about taking away this loop route through the area because it was just was, it just wasn't feasible financially, it required um, multiple bridges over Highway 217. Um, but people were still disappointed, so we wanted, you know, we took that comment in and we uh, we have a recommendation along those lines, uh, something quite different. Um, but people definitely wanted to see more parks and green space, they felt that was very important, especially as this area houses more people and has more businesses uh, um, you know, happening here. Um, as a result of um, what we heard, um, you know, we really want to be realistic about this. There are some limited opportunities to get more um, parks and open space in this area. But they are limited, it, it, in some ways, um, will take the cooperation of private property owners like the mall over here or like the owner of this uh, large wetland area over here. Um, and that's not something we can completely control, um, but, you know, we can do our best and it is an opportunity that we should definitely pursue. Um, you know, there's still an opportunity to, to improve the Metzger School Park. Um, and also study the feasibility of adding stormwater facilities that could also serve um, as public open space. And again, that's, you know, in cooperation with private property owners. So there are some limited abilities to bring more open space in parks. Um, but honestly, at the end of the day, and looking at this area, the biggest issue for um, kind of park, you know, access to parks in this area is literally access. Uh, we have two new parks that are going to be coming online in the very near future, in the next uh, like two years. One is down here called Begon Park along Ash Creek. And the other one is over here, uh, doesn't really have a name, it's off of Steve Street. It's just east of Hall Boulevard and just below, um, oh shoot, now I can't remember the name of the street, but it's below Oak Street, which is up here, so it's a little bit south of that. And then, of course, we have Metzger Park, so we have these three parks. Um, and, but access to them is really quite a challenge um, across Hall Boulevard or across Highway 217. So that's the key thing, if we actually can improve access, which kind of goes back to the transportation recommendations, these parks, you know, are, are going to be great um, for this area, but it's just, it's getting people um, you know, to them in a safe and comfortable way. So those are the main recommendations there. Um, and lastly, this is our idea for a loop recommendation that uses the existing Fano Creek Trail um, both in Tigard and up into Beaverton. Um, but it uses basically a quiet on-street um, route uh, to get there. Um, over here is 74th Avenue, um, and that actually takes you past um, both Garden Home Recreation Center, Florence Point Park and Sun Park in the city of Tigard. Uh, and then if you um, move west, you can actually get to Metzger Park along Landau Street. Um, and then if you go down to Oak Street um, and across Greenberg, uh, this is the, the site of that future park that I was just talking about, Begon Park. Um, so it could be a great way, a great route to connect different parks. Um, but the, the downside is that it's not completely within Tigard. It crosses many different jurisdictional boundaries, um, we've been talking to the agencies about this, um, both Portland um, and Washington County, uh, it's primarily in Washington County. Um, you know, but for the Fano Creek section. And so um, we actually might come back with a slightly different option that includes this still as a concept and is something to consider in our future Trails Master Plan. Um, but we also might um, suggest a different option that is more Tigard-centric. Um, but this is uh, currently um, an option out there. So in terms of next steps, um, what you'll um, you'll be hearing from me very soon in November, uh, when I bring to you um, through a legislative public hearing, um, a new comprehensive plan chapter that will contain new goals and policies that pretty much are going to reflect these draft recommendations that I've shared with you this evening. You know, so based on these different themes, um, as well as, of course, through the lens of the city's strategic vision. Um, and then um, after that, it would go to city council in December. Um, and then in 2022, uh, probably like around six months um, after um, you look at that, we'd be coming back with actual new zoning for this area, as well as a new planned district chapter for our development code. So coming back with code amendments of following um, the comprehensive plan chapter that you'll see um, at the end of this year. And then onward into 2023, you know, that's when you see project construction and program development. You know, new public improvements, hopefully, new housing and commercial buildings uh, and new programs such as business assistance or anti-displacement programs. Um, that would be staffed by probably various people on this call. Um, so that's what we hope to see in the future, obviously, it's 2023 plus as this is implementation of, of a long-range plan also takes a while and these plans generally are for kind of setting the stage for development over the next 10 to 20 years. So that is, I believe, the end of the presentation. And I um, want to uh, basically turn it over to you all and I'm happy to go back and forth through slides. Um, but would love to hear your questions, your feedback, um, anything you'd like to share with us. And like I said, we do have other folks on the call uh, who are subject matter experts and um, you know, would love to bring them into the conversation if possible. So with that, I'm going to unshare my screen, hold on, let me get back there. So I can see your faces, but I can always go back uh, to the presentation if necessary. So it looks like somebody has their hand up, so it looks like um, Commissioner K. Seven has their hand up, is that correct? K. Seven, Commissioner K. Seven?
Yes, I do.
Hi, please, share, share with us.
Hey, very nice presentation, you guys did a fantastic job, thank you. It was very well uh, presented also, very nice. I had one question, um, you mentioned one of your recommendations is to uh, kind of work on uh, easing some of the regulations in terms of height, et cetera.
Yeah.
Uh, I presume, I presume that's sort of a iterative process? Does that really affect when the development starts? Does it push it beyond 2023 plus or anything like that? Or what's the impact of uh, going after that and how, how easy or difficult is it to get those things changed?
To get the regulations changed or to get the developments? To get the regulations? Yeah, so um, that's what we would be hopefully coming back uh, to you as a set of code amendment, um, a code amendment package. Yeah. So that's what we would be hopefully coming back to you as a set of code amendment, a code amendment package in about six months after you see the comprehensive plan chapter that sets up the, the goals and policies. So we've actually, it's kind of been a, as knowing that that's what we needed to do, that we knew we needed to update our code. We've been thinking about that all along. So we're not starting from scratch. All the work is basically also been leading to this second stage that's more like an implementation stage, which will be a package of code amendments to change those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. So it's not going to take forever. It's going to be pretty quick and we are going to be able to make those amendments. Okay. Great. Great. You hear that. Thank you very much.
Yes. You're very welcome. Did anybody else have anything to add to that who's on the call? Becky, did you have anything else to add in that regard?
No, I think that your 2023, you know, is, is kind of like the beginning of when you might see development. You know, as you get the regulations changed, then development can respond to that. So you would expect to see development follow those changes to the regulations. But I think the, the changes that Susan described, you know, that as she said, they're not going to take a terribly long time hopefully to implement. And, and then once they do, it's sort of up to, up to developers. How soon they would pursue a development project after that, but they have to wait until those updated rules are in place before they can submit their application.
And it looks like, so Commissioner, can, can, I'm not going to say your name correctly. Can, can Notice also has a question or a comment?
Yes, both. I want to say, you know, excellent presentation. Very excited to see these changes come through and, and this project develop. So excellent job, guys. My question is related to the support of the multicultural diversity businesses that are planning to, you know, or hoped to be incorporated into this project. Who would be somebody that they can reach out to, to start the discussion on space needs? You know, business needs or things like that to be considered for these spaces?
And Lloyd just turned on his camera because he's, he knows I'm going to call on him. So Lloyd, please take it away. It's a great question.
Yep, it is a great question. There's a couple of, of resources. The first is either myself or Dylan. We're connected to a lot of our partners. I don't know whether we call them CBOs or ESOs, Economic Support Organizations. Nonetheless, organizations like Alantimoherris, Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon, Accelerate, which is a women's focused support organization, SCORE, SBC. We've been developing an ecosystem of business support partners with enough range and, and diversity that an entrepreneur from any proclivity, any nationality, any perspective should be able to find a business advisor or support network that works for them. So yes, we have those partners and either we, either we, meaning Dylan, my colleague, or I hear about them and connect an entrepreneur to that organization, or they can go directly to those, those partners. We've listed all those partners on our business and economic development website. Regarding site selection, this is a question Susan and I talked about. Regarding site selection, one of the best things a, a business that's looking for a space can do is, is work with a, a commercial broker. As you all know, when you, we buy homes, there's a whole system of brokers and it's the same for commercial spaces. There's a whole network of brokers out there trying to fill spaces. So that's something the private sector does pretty well. It's very efficient at that. So there's two answers to your question, Commissioner. One is come to myself or my colleague Dylan and we can refer them into a, a, a business support network. And then secondarily for space, it would be contact a, a, a commercial broker. Do you have any, do you want to know more or did I answer your question well enough? I can't see you, so I don't know.
No, that, that was wonderful. I just want to make sure that, you know, that's shared in a public space of contact people and that you guys are ready and willing to help. So thank you very much for that.
And I should let you know that we probably twice a month send out an email type newsletter that reminds businesses that we have this support network for them. And we just mailed 2,200 mailers out to 2,200 businesses, reminding them about this support network. And we listed out all those support organizations. So we're, we're pretty consistently in touch with the businesses that we know about.
Thank you so much, Lloyd. It looks like Commissioner Jackson has a comment or a question?
Yes, thanks. I had a couple of questions on transportations and connections. So I know that there's a bill in the House right now, I think it's 2515, to pass control of Hall Boulevard to the city. And I was just curious if, it's probably kind of a long shot, but if it were to get out of committee and pass, if that happens, does that significantly change how we would approach that corridor in this update?
That is a great question. And, and Dave, are, can you pop in and help us out? We, yeah.
So I guess the, it answers in a couple of ways. So first of all, we've been in an ongoing conversation with ODOT over the past year. You're plus now in, in working towards a jurisdictional transfer of Hall Boulevard. So it is, it's actually a project we are actively working on. There is quite a few preliminary steps that need to be taken before we get to a point where we're talking about funding that would be associated with the transfer. So we're working on those preliminary steps right now. We're putting together what's called the State of Good Repair Cost Estimate for the asset or the, the roadway. And when they say asset, it's like, not just the pavement, but it's the, the stuff underground, stormwater, utilities. It's, it's sidewalks. It's, it's everything associated with it. So we're working on that cost estimate right now. And then to your, your specific question was, would it, would it change the way we approach the corridor? I think what we're proposing right now with the Transportation System Plan, which is, I've, I've spoken with you previously about our proposal for Hall Boulevard. And I'll, I'll be back in December for our public hearing on the Transportation System Plan. We are proposing some changes to the current Hall Boulevard cross-section in terms of a future cross-section. So we're focusing more on the complete streets type aspects of Hall Boulevard to making sure that we have really good sidewalks, really good bicycle facilities, excellent transit infrastructure along the corridor, rather than looking at and widening the roadway more than its current cross-section. Future widening was really focused south of 99. The segment north of Highway 99. I think the, the maximum cross-section you would have seen there would be three lanes, with the exception being at some key intersections like Olson and then moving over towards Beaverton once you get to 217. So it's kind of a long-winded response to your question, but I hope it informs your question. We are working on the jurisdictional transfer. And I guess in terms of seeing improvements to the roadway, if we're able to secure funding, whether it's through the state legislature or some other means, that's really the key to getting these improvements made is, is finding the funding source. So any, any transfer of the roadway would include some financial contribution from ODOT or would include them doing the work themselves before we take over ownership.
And Dave, perhaps could you do a plug for the ODOT survey that's currently out there about Hall Boulevard?
Yeah, actually we should be sending an email out to the Planning Commission. So there is an active ODOT survey right now that has a potential project included or Hall Boulevard between Hemlock and Oak Street. This was originally submitted by ODOT for an ODOT Safe Routes to School grant to rebuild or build new sidewalks and, and bike lanes and associated improvements on Hall Boulevard during the 2018 Safe Routes Infrastructure Grant Cycle. The ODOT project was not selected to move forward during that cycle. However, I will make it note that our, our project on Locust Street was selected. So we do have some Safe Routes Funding Program for Locust right now. But this ODOT submittal for Hall Boulevard was kept alive in terms of a project concept. And now they have a new funding source that they're, they're looking at projects across the state right now to fund with this new funding source. And this, this one project is on the 150% list right now. And they're actively seeking feedback from communities across the state on these, these projects. So we'll, we'll send you a notice and direct you to the website where you can provide feedback on that project. And it would be great if you could share that with your, your networks as well. So we can get some really good, robust feedback to ODOT and try to keep this project alive.
Thank you, Dave. And can I ask Commissioner Jackson? When you asked about whether our approach would change, were you talking about our approach to the road? Or our approach to the land use recommendations on either side of the road?
I guess I was mostly thinking the road and the, you know, the improvements to the road, but, but either.
Well, Dave definitely answered the one about the road itself, but our, our recommendations would not change. Because in fact, because Hall Boulevard is such a long corridor, it actually has, changes character in a number of different places as it travels through Beaverton and then Tigard and north and south of 99W. And even currently right now in our TSP, and I am pretty sure this was agreed to by ODOT with our last TSP update, that the portion through this project area, the max would be a three-lane cross-section. Unlike further south where there was a five-lane cross-section kind of on the books that we were, we were challenging that assumption or that direction going forward when, when we were actively dealing with light rail as a project. So yeah, like nothing about the recommendations, either crossings to get people across Hall Boulevard in a safe and comfortable way, or the land use recommendations would change if we got jurisdictional transfer.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
You're welcome. Okay, who else? It looks like Commissioner Shuck has their hand up?
Yes, hi there. I too really liked your presentation. I particularly like all the residential areas that you've opened up across the whole scope of the project. I think that's really good, giving our needed housing. My question's related to the wetland area. One of the things that we see and we saw a project recently come before the Planning Commission involved filling a wetland. And it was approved by the Planning Commission because a wetland was going to be improved somewhere else. But you know, we kind of never know where this somewhere else is. So to think that a wetland in Tigard could be on a list of wetlands that could get improved seems to be something that could be very positive. So maybe you could talk a little bit about that parcel and what's involved there and what would, what would that mean?
Yeah, so there are different kinds of wetlands. Like in terms of their significance, I guess is the right word. And so the wetland that happens to be in this area just north of Highway 217, which is rather large, is actually the most protected kind of wetland that we have in Tigard. And it's actually called a significant wetland. And so to impact a significant wetland, you, well, you, essentially you can't touch a significant wetland. Our code is really, it really draws a very hard line in the sand for significant wetland protection because of the function that they serve for the, for many different reasons for like what they serve for creeks and flood storage and habitat and all those kinds of things. And so like there's an analysis that goes into designating like which wetland is significant and which wetland isn't. And I don't know if we are going to be, I don't think there's any plans to like redo that analysis anytime soon. So for definitely the, the very, the, the future, this wetland area is significant. And so there would be basically no opportunity for development because of the nature of the wetland. But we are, we want to at least explore the opportunity because this wetland area happens to be owned by a, a, a private property owner who actually recently passed away. And he actually did a lot of damage to the wetland. And I feel like I can say that honestly and publicly because the city even took this person to court a number of times for illegally filling the wetland and doing all sorts of other things. And so, but this person recently passed and now the, all the property is, you know, in the hands of this person's heirs. And so we are interested in approaching them to see if they are open to basically collaborating, coordinating together to maybe, maybe help restore the function of this wetland. It used to be a huge stop for migratory birds back in the day, as residents tell us. It used to function a lot better and until it just got degraded over time. And so, you know, we're hoping that it, there might be a possibility to improve its, its function as a wetland. But also maybe, you know, where it can be done without impact to allow for some kind of, some open space for public benefits, you know, whether it's a viewing platform or a trail along the edge, but something. But you know, that really depends on a lot of things. And you know, the first thing that happens when someone explores even something like that is to figure out exactly where the wetland is located. So there's a delineation that's involved. And then you kind of figure out, you know, what might you be able to do to help it? And then where might you be able to actually have some public amenity associated with it? So we have, we have some optimism with this one individual. You know, you know, passing on the property to his heirs, but we have yet begun that process of talking with them because this individual just recently died. So we're, we're going to be respectful and wait a little bit.
Yeah, sure. I just, I, and, and again, my question wasn't geared towards development. It was geared toward protection. And it seemed like, it seemed like a great area to, you know, when, when, when another property or another project has an area that can be filled, that to improve another area in Tigard seems like a really, real positive thing. So I just, that, since we recently looked at one of these types of projects, I thought that was a good thing to, to see. So thank you for your answer.
Yeah. And actually just to build on that, CPO4M, which is the community, the community org is like the Neighborhood Association for Metzger, that they, particularly the CPO4M president, he contacted me a while ago and he would love for the community organization to also be a, you know, to work with agencies like a neighbor, nature neighborhood, you know, grant perhaps through Metro, but to partner with other agencies like Clean Water Services, the city, even ODOT because 217 is right along there. And they're always looking for places to do mitigation for projects that they do elsewhere. And they, and they looked long and hard at this site when they're, because of the Highway 217 auxiliary, auxiliary project. I can never say that word. But this, this area is on a lot of people's radar. And so we just hope something really good and positive can come about it and really want to keep in mind like, you know, in a community, when a neighborhood organization gets involved and there's real strong community support for something like this, so much can happen. And we're definitely right there to help, you know, whether it's partnering with CWS and the community, but you know, looking for funds and whatnot. Because this could be a great, you know, just natural resource benefit for the public, even if we can't fit in a trail, but, or anything like that. But it still could be a great benefit to the whole creek system in that area, especially Ash Creek.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, it looks like Commissioner K7 and Commissioner Shuck still have their hands up. Did you have another question? Or did you have your hand up from your previous question?
I'm sorry, I forgot to lower my hand. Yeah.
It's a, it's okay. It's hard sometimes to know because you know, you're not like this the whole time. Um, okay, I don't see any more hands. Is there any other, any other questions out there from folks? Are we wrapping it up?
Susan, can I ask a quick question?
Of course. Of course.
Um, so this might be for Becky. So I might have I might have missed it. So how does how would the anti-displacement program wa- uh work? How would you imagine that will work? Like, if I were a tenant there, would I be notified of that? And I would have to apply for something or and on the other hand, if I were the the landlord or additional restriction be placed on me, how 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 would that work?
I'd love to um pull in Skylar to speak to that as well because I think Skylar can speak a little bit more to the implementation side. Um, I would say there's a there's a range of different types of interventions that a city can consider um in trying to help promote um stability for apartment residents. Um, and um, so they can be regulatory, that might require notice, you know, be given to tenants. Um, they can be more incentive based, like if you um where you would be reaching out to property owners and trying to find sort of willing partners um to um have some sort of a an incentive in exchange for some sort of affordability um guarantee over a certain period of time. Um, and there can also be programs that target um kind of individual households that are um that need maybe shorter term support or things like that. Um, Skylar, is Skylar on? And Skylar, do you want to speak a little bit to how you're picturing um the programs that that you envision for this area?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Becky. I think that's actually a really good summary of kind of what's available to us. Um, I do want to highlight that, you know, often when we talk about anti-displacement, we think of it in terms of it's always someone staying in the home that they're in. And it's not, I I want to be clear that it's not always that. So there are situations where we look at policies like um helping uh increase homeownership rates, right? Helping someone to buy the house they're in or to buy a house in the neighborhood they're in. And then there's also, we know that there is going to be some displacement that happens with redevelopment and that we don't uh as a jurisdictional body have a lot of say over how that happens. But what we do have a say over is implementing the right set of uh incentives uh and um kind of uh like opportunities out there for new housing to be developed that can take the place of the housing that was lost. So um, that coupled sometimes with um right to return policies um which you're seeing more and more in in affordable housing development around the region um can help to uh, you know, mitigate uh displacement that would be happening as a result of market actions. So it's a combo of uh regulatory approaches, incentives, uh, and uh really kind of just being aware of what the needs are in the community and when displacement is happening.
Thank you both, Commissioner or President Who did that? Did they answer your question?
Um, in a very abstract way still. So um, maybe as we move forward with this project, there will be more uh more ideal be solidified so we can better put our fingers on. Because I, you know, ideally, I I understand why what you are trying to do. But practically, it's like a tuck and pull between less regulation. But for this area, it seems like you are trying to put more regulation. So uh, you know, I guess it's it's the keys to find the right balance. So um, but I think that's good enough for me for now, but we'll have time to work on this further.
Yeah, and so um, sorry, I'm just writing that's, you know, what you just said, the last thing before I forgot it. Um, I think, yeah, what Becky and Skylar are describing is the variety of interventions that we can choose. Um, and ultimately, it comes down to what policies we adopt and also what what things we fund, um, choose to fund as a priority. And that is um a conversation that staff and the various and Skylar has been doing this work uh with council, has been working with council on ever since the adoption of the Affordable Housing Plan. Because as I was saying, the many of the things that we um are recommending are things that are actually in the Affordable Housing Plan that just haven't been implemented yet. And so this is kind of reminding council or just reiterating, there's still need. And and because of all the work and analysis we've done in area, we know that there's a specific need in a specific location. So the question is, what are they willing to do? Are they willing to put money behind it? Are they willing to support, you know, an aggressive regulatory approach or prefer to do a more, you know, kind of incentive and like the carrot approach? So it first is a question of policy. And then I think um, you know, then it's about tactics, you know, then it's about like the implementation step. But we're still in that we have some policies on the books with the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, and some of them, we've actually, you know, checked the box. Like, we have, um, maybe Skylar, you can give me example, like, what's one of the things we've actually done?
Well, so we we allow tax exemptions for land banking now. Um, we, you know, we have an STC exemption, full STC exemption from city STCs um for affordable housing. That's a project that Susan headed up. Um, we've got um construction excise tax to fund affordable housing programs. So we actually have some ability to invest for the first time in affordable housing. That's something the city has not really had the ability to do in the past, just budgetarily speaking. So um, you know, we we have some of those things. And then I I would say in some sense, even though those seem like big, they're those were kind of low hanging fruit. And what remains are um some of the more thorny issues or the more challenging issues. And I would give the example of, you know, you're asking about anti-displacement. One of the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Plan is tenant protections. Um, and that's challenging both from a legal standpoint because there is some amount of preemption at the state level of local policies. Um, and there have been a host of, well, not a host, there's been a few uh state policy uh state laws that have been passed around anti-displacement work. Um, like the rent increase uh changes where, you know, you're limited to a certain percentage plus the CPI. I think it's ten percent this year. Um, but then things like relocation assistance, that's something that Portland implemented and is currently being challenged in the courts. And there's not uh a determination yet from the Oregon Supreme Court. I think it's been upheld a couple of times, but it's at the Oregon Supreme Court now. So that's that's an example of something that's um you know, more legally challenging, but it's also more politically challenging because there's a constituency for whom uh rent control is um, you know, seen as um infringing, I guess, on on their ability to conduct business or it's getting into the midst of contract negotiations and that kind of thing. So um, those are some things that remain to be worked on. And and maybe it's not relocation assistance, maybe it's something else. Maybe it's the city providing the relocation assistance. But all of those approaches require political uh political approaches to changing policy or they require um political approaches to providing funding.
And the one thing, oh, oh, go ahead, Becky.
I was gonna say, I I think it's um all all of the potential interventions are um are are somewhat challenging. Um, you know, Beaverton has, they have a pilot program. I'm not sure of its current status, but they this is something they've been working on and that the kind of carrot incentive, trying to find willing property owners approach and that. Um, that takes takes work and it's they've been kind of trying to work that out. You know, Skylar mentioned Portland's example of a more regulatory relocation assistance type of program. And um, and that's that's been challenging for them. Um, and um, funding, I mean, it's great that you guys have um the construction excise tax funding because it is pretty flexible and it gives you that ability to to um to the extent that you have the funds available to um to be a little bit more. Um, I it just gives you access to to funding that there isn't necessarily something comparable at the state level. Um, but it it is still, you know, short of acquiring properties outright, which most jurisdictions are are not in the business of doing. Um, the um, the options are you're 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 trying to do some sort of dance of partnering with property owners or putting a little bit of regulation, maybe a little bit of incentive. Um, or just trying to sort of help the individual households mitigate or absorb the um, the impacts of um either their rent increasing, getting them into more stable housing, getting them to be homeowners, things like that. So trying to sort of work with individual households versus at the property level.
So in other words, it's complicated. But I really appreciate that you asked the question. I mean, it's 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 a hard nut to crack. But, you know, we um in doing the displacement risk analysis and understanding where we have um the most households kind of at the the highest risk, um, at least it helps us. It it creates, um, it even though it doesn't, you know, put a a face to the issue in some ways, it it really helps focus, I think, where we do need to focus our efforts. You know, so if if council does um adopt um more local tenant protections that supplement current statewide protections, that um, you know, we know places where that would, you know, like, maybe really, we we want to track it to see if it actually really works in this location where we've determined that there is higher risk or with the CET tax money, you know, if we have that. Um, and um, again, it just helps us focus where to put that money, whether it's supporting individual households or partnering with um a property owner if they're doing improvements. You know, if there's an agreement to keep the rents, you know, um, not from skyrocketing. So that gives us a little bit of flexibility. So we're trying to highlight with these recommendations how specific things that are in the Affordable Housing Plan, as well as other things, can specifically help this area. Um, and the one thing I'll also say that you um, I'm hoping will will kind of gain some legs is one of the recommendations is about um kind of capturing um the like, so if if the mall really does redevelop, well, we're hoping that the Sears redevelopment project happens. Uh, when they pull all those permits, the amount of SDCs they're going to pay and the amount of CET they're going to pay is going to be pretty substantial. And so one of the ideas, one of the recommendations is to invest in this area with our SDC funds and our CET funds on par with the private investment that's happening in this area. Because generally, those funds just go into the SDC pot for the whole city or the CET pot for the whole city. But we actually know from other analysis and census data that this area and the area immediately south of two seventeen, the Greenberg kind of two seventeen area is um areas in the city of Tigard that have like some of the highest uh potential indicators of disadvantage. So ba- basically really socially vulnerable populations. So if we actually kind of say, well, you know, it's almost like uh the impacts of development are going to be felt in this area if the mall really takes off. And so therefore, shouldn't the benefits of, you know, of that kind of redevelopment also uh happen in this area? And so that's kind of like a recommendation to reinvest on par with the private investment that's happening is one of the recommendations that would help provide a unique funding source for this area that it doesn't have. Because unlike downtown in the triangle, it doesn't have um a tax increment financing fund. So um, that's, I think, um, just something to highlight in the recommendations you might might be interested in.
Yeah, that's that's a really great idea because I have a feeling as the mall is getting fancier and fancier, the the risks for displacement will go up even more so around the area, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, it it's, yes, we have the concern. On the one hand, we're like, yay, new shiny things. And on the other hand, it's like, sometimes new shiny things um have repercussions that are not good. And so we're trying to be more mindful as we do these kinds of planning efforts when we're excited when things take off. Um, and I think we were in a u- unique position in the triangle in that there wasn't a big residential population. It had long since changed and um, and so there wasn't as, I mean, there still is a risk. But there was um, there was not the the same percentage of renters in that area. A lot of those folks that still were living in the triangle um were homeowners, relatively speaking. And also then River Terrace was a completely different story where it's a green field and the people are selling their property to, you know, a developer and they're making money. Um, but this area is kind of one of the more recent long range planning efforts we've done where this area in downtown that really does have a number of renters who um are at risk of displacement just because of the market and sometimes because of the things the city does to incentivize redevelopment. So it's an important thing to take for us to, you know, pay attention to.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And um, Kate, it looks like Commissioner K seven, do you have your hand up again?
Yes, I do. Sorry. Um, as um the president was talking, I thought of another clarifying question I would like to ask, if I may. Um, so given that this is a ten to twenty year forward looking plan, right? And given that, yes, currently, we have all these regulations preventing us from, you know, the height limitations, et cetera. Is they is it even within the realm of possibility to insist on a foundation for all the new buildings to be able to um add on more floors later on? If need be, as a part of the expansion for the in the for in in the long range of ten to twenty years?
That is a really interesting question. And I'm going to bring up one example that I know of, but I'm then I'm going to ask Becky to chime in because I I don't have a good answer um for most of your question. But um, I know that um we, it's very easy for us to regulate new parking structures to require the ground, for example, to require the ground floor to be um adaptively reused or the whole structure to be adaptively reused um by keeping the floor planes flat instead of having them be um um, you know, sloped, um, which many parking structures, like the whole thing is kind of sloped. And then you can never really do anything with that. Um, so that's a fairly easy thing to do, but that only addresses one kind of building type. Becky, do you know of any approach to doing something like that to kind of set it up so that you can add on later? Like, it kind of is like a building code kind of thing, too.
It it is, you know, one of the few examples where I've seen anything like that is actually right across the street from my office tower. Um, but that was just an underground parking garage that they said someday, we're going to put a building on this. And now probably thirty, forty years later, they're finally put at great cost, putting a building on top of that underground parking deck. Um, it's very complicated with the way that loads get. I am not a structural engineer at all, um, but I do know that um it is very difficult to design um a pretty universal um foundation and and structure for a building because the way that um, that just the way that uh like elevators and the water and sewer pipes and the electrical and the structural members and the spacing of those structural members all varies depending on the use. So it can be um difficult even just to convert between two different uses, let alone to then stack on top. Um, and I would say that um trying to trying to get um construction now to plan for accommodating some unknown future amount of development, I think, would be very challenging from a structural and cost perspective. Um, and I think that um Susan's point about about parking decks and even, I mean, uh, we often love to hate surface parking, but one of the good things about it is it's quite easy comparatively to convert to something else. And so in some ways, um, you know, those it thinking about like a site plan and where are those surface parking lots and pads and how are they arranged? And how is the sort of circulation among them designed? Could that be a future street grid? I think that kind of um thinking can can maybe more easily become um. I think that kind of, um, thinking can, can maybe more easily become, um, you know, a, a phased development where maybe now it needs to be a parking lot, but maybe in 10 years, it could be a building that's taller than the one that's next to it now. So I think that kind of like sort of site plan level thinking for an area like this can be helpful in thinking about, you know, a future street grid, even if there are some gaps in it now that are currently surface parking. Um, and I think that's probably gets to some of your future thinking, which I think is great. But without, um, you know, creating more obstacles now, um, by, by trying to anticipate, you know, what a, you know, what will the building code look like in 20 years for an unknown use of unknown size? Yeah, I think there's just, there's just so many unknowns that it's really difficult, um, to imagine, uh, uh, building in a way that would actually make it possible to convert it later or build on top of it later.
Okay. Thank you. Just curiosity question. Thank you.
That was a great response, Becky. Thank you. Um, and I really appreciate commissioners, all of you, that, um, you, uh, managed to ask such a variety of questions as to engage all of the entire team from economic development to transportation to, um, to housing, uh, to the market. I really appreciate the breadth of the questions that you brought to the table. Um, and just, I want to reiterate that, um, this, uh, PowerPoint presentation, Doreen will be attaching it to. It'll be part of the record. You can go back and look at it. Um, again, the, the actual recommendation, individual sheets, they were a part of your meeting packet. Uh, so please feel free to, uh, you know, get back in touch with the, even after this meeting. If you have additional comments or questions, um, we will, um, I mean, we don't have, I mean, the reason why we wanted to do this briefing is that we have just a little bit of time to continue to refine the goals and policies, again, that are going to be, uh, basically built off of what the recommendations kind of look like now. But the next time you see them, they'll be in a very, you know, word documents, all text kind of format. It won't be as pretty, uh, but it'll have kind of very similar content. So if you have, um, issues or questions with, you know, how these draft recommendations, you know, how they will, think of them as goals and policies, you know, how they will then, you know, set the stage for the new zoning and the code amendments that we will bring. Let, let, just let me know if you have any additional comments or questions about those. Cause that's, that's what you'll next see, just as a reminder, is a comprehensive plan chapter with goals and policies and kind of action measures, which are really similar to what you've seen tonight in the draft recommendations. Not exactly the same, but similar.
All right. Thank you, Susan, Becky, Dave, Skylar, and I believe Lloyd, Lloyd's not here. But, um, thank you all for your presentation. The planning commissioners are looking forward to, uh, working with you on the finalizing the goal and policy of Washington Square Regional Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So Doreen, are we turning it back to you or are we turning it back to you, President Who? I, um, because I, I know that Tom is not here tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I think I would just ask, I, I, I can take over. So.
Okay.
Commissioners, um, Tom is not here today, so, um, we can briefly move on to other business. Do you have any, anything you would like to discuss at this point? I just want to remind, remind you from the last meeting, um, after the last meeting on the Rivers, River Sias shows, the Meadow meeting, we received a, um, a email from a existing neighbor. She was pretty not pleased with some of our commissioners' comment about how the existing neighbors should have anticipated future development and traffic and stuff like that. So I just want to remind commissioners that, you know, these meetings, these meetings are public meetings and they will be broadcast live and be recorded. So be mindful that there are people, they are public viewing our meetings that you may not be aware of. So just be, be more sensitive about, you know, comments being submitted and, and even though sometimes you are absolutely correct, when the neighbors submit their comments, they have, they do have legitimate concerns. So just be, be more mindful of your comments as well. Um, anything else, commissioners? Would you like to discuss that or you don't have to? Okay, so with no other business being discussed, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. See you at the next meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.